Now, can I ask, can I ask that for the rest of the evening, however long it takes, that we shall be recorded to whoever is speaking? Because tonight was particularly bad with some of the side meetings going on. Now, and whoever speaks, let them finish before you start, you know, having a go at them. Now, I'm going to ask Deirdre then to, just to clarify, I'm going to hand it to the, we, today, this Lord Mayor and City Manager asked Protocol to reconsider its position in relation to Protocol. I'll ask the Chairperson of Protocol to respond to the meeting that took place.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Well, we had a very well-attended Protocol Committee meeting, maybe we should have them in future at quarter past nine in the evening. We did consider the complaint made in relation to three members. The committee was of a very large majority view that there was not a conflict of interest. However, it was also agreed that if any member themselves felt there was a conflict of interest, well then, that was a matter for themselves, but the committee did not feel that there was a conflict of interest, and so that we should proceed. And we've no doubt that the issue will be further discussed at further Protocol meetings, the wider issue of how we deal with conflicts and so forth. But in this instance, we do not feel there was a conflict of interest.
Okay. Now, what we're going to do now, we have the breviement in front of us, on that breviement there was a motion put forward. We also have an amendment to the motion, and like all amendments, they come prior to the motion being taken. So I'm going to, John, is this a point of order?
It's, that amendment is actually out of order. Standing Order 29, it substantially changes the motion that is seeking to amend, so it's actually against standing orders.
Okay. Well, I think the ruling of, the, my understanding is the proposal is changing from a month to a week. That's the substantial change.
On a point of order, that is not what section, or section 29 says. You are allowed substantially to change a motion.
It's not, I mean, I wouldn't believe it's a direct conflict, but I think, John, I, so, hang on, can I say my question?
Just on a point of order, can I ask again, is the motion in order? The motion was put and carried at the Protocol Committee, where now, if we accept the breviement, we accept that motion as part of it, we are not, we are not voting on the actual motion, we are voting on the breviement, so that amendment is out of order. You can reject the breviement and put in an alternative if you want, but we, if we both accept the breviement...
Point of order, Lord Mayor. Hang on, you can't, if you reject the breviement, you're rejecting a minute of a meeting, right, on the grounds, that's where the breviement is. Okay, okay. Now, in that breviement, and it's been, and it was declared, it was stated earlier on that there's confusion why some of the motions come to us from certain communities, some of them come on the agenda, and some of them as part of the breviement. In light of the immediate attention that this has taken, it was agreed today with the group leaders that we would take this motion as a motion. Now, there's an amendment put forward to the motion, the question is, is flying both the Palestinian and Israeli flag a complete change to the motion? I, I don't know.
On a point of order, Lord Mayor, that is not the question, as in the question that is set out by Standing Order 29 is whether it is a direct negative, and that is the question that you have to ask.
Can I make a ring, as a Lord Mayor, I don't believe it's a direct negative on the actual substantive motion in the first place. That's my genuine view on it, and that's the ruling I'd ask you to adhere by. So I'm asking at this stage, can we...
I raised this issue as a point of order, and I have to say, it's a gesture of solidarity with Palestinians living under Israeli occupation, so it is a direct negative to then extend the motion by waiving an amendment to support all parties.
Well, John, we made, I made a decision on this, I don't believe it's a direct negative, because, okay, now, is that accepted by the team? Okay, now, can we now go on to, please, we'll be here till five in the morning, can we go on to the amendment, and the proposer of the amendment, he'll be given two minutes to speak on it.
Okay, do I need, sorry, Lord Mayor, do I need to read the amendment out, or is it...
I'll ask Deirdre to read the amendment, that gives you more time to speak.
Okay. Noting, this is the amendment text, noting recent reports of diplomatic developments by the Irish state towards full recognition of the State of Palestine, aware also that Ireland accorded the Palestinian delegation in Dublin diplomatic status in 2014, the same year that witnessed both Houses of Anarachthus pass motions in support of Palestinian statehood, and acknowledging the extensive suffering experienced by civilians on both sides during the Palestine-Israel conflict, that the City Council affirms its support for a peace process based on a two-state solution with parity of esteem and will fly the flags of Palestine and Israel over City Hall for one week in support of all diplomatic initiatives to achieve a peaceful resolution to this ongoing conflict. And it's councillor Anfini.
Councillor Anfini.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Okay, I'm opposed to the motion before by councillor Lyons to fly the Palestinian flag over City Hall for the month of May. I regard the proposal as ill-thought-out, and it does little to further the cause of the Palestinian people. I completely support a two-state solution for Palestine and Israel with parties of esteem for both, and I believe we should be supportive of the government's diplomatic efforts in progressing this internationally, as well as acknowledging the move in 2014 to accord the Palestinian delegation in Dublin diplomatic status. Ireland has over decades positioned itself as a nation of peacekeepers, and in relation to our own conflict on the island, we've proven that we are also peacemakers. I wonder when those at the March Protocol Meeting passed the motion, did they give any thought to the potential difficult position that a partisan approach presents for our peacekeeping Irish troops on United Nations duty in the Golan Heights and other parts of the region? I fully recognise that the Palestinian people have suffered for far too long, and human rights have been disgracefully flaunted by Israel, but also too by many other nations in the region. However, I feel that the flying of the flag does not advance the case of the Palestinian people in any helpful way, but rather makes it difficult for the Irish state to be regarded as helpful and objective in being part of any international diplomatic effort to resolve the sad, destructive, and divisive conflict. Before I conclude, I would just like to say, I'm disappointed that Sinn Féin are supporting the flying of a flag of only one of the parties to a conflict, given the experience and hurt felt by Irish nationalists when the Union Jack was flying over civic and government offices in Northern Ireland during our own conflict on the island. Finally, I am asking my fellow councillors to consider passing my amendment to the breviement, not because we don't emphasise, empathise with the Palestinian struggle, but because flying of the flag is inflammatory, partisan, and is contrary to the meaningful role we play as peacemakers and peacekeepers, which is more helpful to the Palestinian people than flying a flag over the building. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Reilly.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I cannot support this amendment in good conscience, by the proposer's own words, Israel are guilty of human rights crimes. I certainly would not want the flag of anyone flying over Dublin City Council that are guilty by our own words of such crime. I want to commend councillor Lyons for putting forward this motion, I think it's, it's a very good initiative, but it's also an opportunity for us and the citizens of Dublin to show solidarity with the Palestinian people, which we have a proud history of doing so, and will continue to do so. I would ask the councillors to reject this amendment because it completely takes away from the original motion. Thank you.
Councillor Andrews.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I too would oppose this amendment. I think that the way Israel is going, a two-state solution won't be possible. In fact, there won't be a solution possible at all that embraces Palestinian rights and human rights. What will happen, the only solution is that the Palestinians will be wiped out as a community, and that's what Israel is focused on, and that is what the international community is standing by and allowing to happen. And, you know, we can't be seen to support a nation, a rogue state, which is what Israel is, we can't be allowed to support, seen to support those by flying their flag, even though they're denying and the human rights of Palestinians, and they deny and ignore international law. So I just certainly wouldn't support this, and I think, I speak for the Sinn Féin group here. Thanks, Jim.
Councillor, councillor Binchi.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't going to support councillor Anfini's motion, because I don't think we should be flying any flags over City Hall, I don't think we should be interfering in the Middle East peace process in this way, but on the basis that it's a compromise motion, I am willing to support it. And in so doing, I'm conscious of the fact that there's a difference in a state and its government policies, and if I am, by supporting this motion, supporting the flying, the flying of the Palestinian flag, it doesn't mean I support with the people who are currently in government in parts of Palestine, including in the Gaza Strip. But it means that I am agreeing and showing some solidarity with the proposal that the Palestinian state should be recognised, which I agree with. And similarly, by flying the Israeli flag, I'm not saying that I currently agree with the current policies of the current Israeli government, but I'm saying that I agree with the right of existence of Israel. And I do think there's a point at which we have to say that we may disagree with governments, but we agree with the existence of the state. And I am conceding quite a bit by doing this, and I would hope that some of the more moderate members in this, in this chamber would also take that step and support this compromise motion, because we have to ask what we're doing here, is it that we want to signal something, or is that we actually want to achieve something? There is a peace process out there. The state has taken a position on that peace process, which is a two-state solution. And I would hope that the people who are going to vote down this amendment aren't sending the signal, I think they're sending, which is that there are certain elements in the Middle East who don't recognise the right of the State of Israel to exist. And if they are aligning themselves with those, with those groups and those parties, they're doing a huge disservice to the, the Middle East peace process. I think that this motion, it's not perfect, but it's a lot better than the partisan motion that's been put forward by councillor Lyons, and therefore I'm, I'm supporting the amendment.
Councillor, councillor Omri.
Very much, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I just want to second this motion. It's not a Fine Gael motion, Lord Mayor, it's a compromise motion, and support is invited around this chamber for us. A lot of the points have already been made. I firmly believe in a two-state solution, full diplomatic relations with Palestine, same with Israel, and between the two states themselves. We have long played the role of honest broker, sometimes good, sometimes not so good, and I think, you know, taking, passing a motion, the original motion just really compromises our neutrality on an issue like this, so I'm looking for support. Councillor Anfini has made the case in terms of troops, troops on the ground in the Golan Heights and in other places, and the difficulties that they could find themselves in, but I'm just looking, I'm seconding the motion, I'm looking for support around the chamber on a, on a non-partisan basis for the compromise. Thank you.
Councillor, councillor Doolan.
Good morning, our fair, first I just want to extend greetings to a delegation from the Irish-Palestinian solidarity campaign, who I'm very proud to support, as many people in this chamber does, and for keeping the, literally the flag flying for Palestine in this city, and do Trojan work in supporting the rights of the Palestinian people, and to hope that we'll have a Palestinian nation in our lifetime. I cannot support the motion, I think it's absolutely partisan. We, I support the motion to fly the Palestinian flag above City Hall, I'm very proud to support that, and I'm on public record as, as supporting that. It's an act of peaceful international solidarity, in line with the vote that took place in Sligo today, and many other local authorities in Ireland and elsewhere. And Dublin has a proud history of national and international solidarity, going from taking on the might of the British Empire in 1916, right through to supporting the Dons' strikers when they refused to handle apartheid produce, right through to supporting the people of East Timor. And long may that, that solidarity and that proactive act of solidarity continue. And in no way does flying the flag of Palestine distract from the need for a two, a two-state solution, two viable nations living peacefully together. But what this does is support solidarity with one side who's having to live under the brutal occupation of Israel, and done so with the support of the might of the USA. And if there is a threat to our troops in the Golan Heights, well then, that threat comes straight from Israel, and should be taken up with the Israeli embassy if that should happen, as it has before. But I'd be supporting this motion, and I would plead that councillors from all parties and from none to support the motion, and let's show support with the people of Palestine. And I look forward to United Ireland playing a united Palestine in the World Cup in our lifetime.
Thank you. Councillor McGinnity.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, I note that the Protocol Committee were very cautious about setting a precedent on the flying of flags on City Hall, and they were rightly so. I mean, my way of thinking, the only flags that should be flying over this building are the flags of Ireland and the flags of the EU. As far as I'm aware, they are the only two flags that have flown here since 1922, I'm open to correction, but since 1922, they are the only flags that have flown over this building. So I'm not in favour of the motion, I'm not in favour of the amendment, because both of them are looking to fly flags over this building. We in this country should know a bit more about flags. If you go up to Belfast, which isn't that far away, there are differing flags flying over different buildings at various points in time, which gives rise to major difficulties. And really, if you want to keep things simple, the question is, are we advancing anybody or anything? The Palestinians, it's been suggested, you know, have no influence. Well, the Palestinian Prime Minister was in the Oval Office with President Trump last week, in exactly the same way as Artishe was a couple of weeks before that, so they, they are on the radar, they are on the radar, the Palestinian Prime Minister was sitting beside President Trump, and he was the only other person in the room, so the two of them are having, obviously having a conversation. The USA are trying to pursue a two-state solution on the basis of trying to have peace. We do need peace, yes, there are major issues, and I'm not going to argue historical rights and wrongs, but we shouldn't be using this building with flags for that purpose, and on that basis, I'm opposed to both motions, and I'd order members to simply not fly any flags other than the flag of the Republic of Ireland and the European Community over this building. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brian.
Well, I oppose the proposed amendment, because it's fundamentally a cop-out, and we support a gesture of solidarity for the Palestinian people, both in recognition of the historical injustice that was done to them, but also the fresh injustices that are daily occurred, particularly in regard to the settlements. And deputies in the Dáil and senators as well received a letter from the mission of the State of Palestine, one of which was passed on to me, that was detailed at the particularly grave juncture that we're at in terms of the prisoners who were on hunger strike, and among them, we have some 550 that are held under administrative detention, so-called, which is internment without trial, 300 children as well. So we're dealing with a situation of oppressors and oppressed, and I, it's a question of which is which, and the, this motion, our amendment, is somehow trying to be unduly even-handed. I mean, certainly I believe for one in the right for people to resist what's taken place to them. I think the most effective resistance we saw in Palestine was that of the First Intifada that kicked off in 1987, which was a mass resistance, not under the control of any particular political faction. And you can support a gesture of solidarity with the Palestinian people without having to be accused of being in an alignment with Fatah or Hamas, which certainly I'm not. I support a socialist solution to the problems in the Middle East, whatever form that takes, whether it's a two or one state, a socialist solution in that region. And as well, I salute those who are resisting the design of state from within the Israeli state as well, the Refusenik movement, and those that see the injustice that's been done supposedly in their name, and I think anything that breaks up the cohesion of, of the Israeli state is to be welcomed as well, because the solution lies there as well.
Councillor Ryan.
Thanks. Just on, on the amendment, it seems strange that a request to fly the Palestinian flag over City Hall had to go through the Protocol Committee, and a request to fly the Israeli flag doesn't have to, so I do think it's worth, I would like to hear whether or not that's in order. And the second, in terms of the motion more broadly, it's very clear why there's a difference. I don't think that, it's, it's not a conflict of equals, and effectively giving, allowing both flags to fly alongside each other would give a signal that we believe it is a conflict of equals. And so I'd encourage anybody who believes it's not a conflict of equals to consider their vote very carefully. The reason, the clearest reason why that's the case is the way that Israelis who oppose the occupation in Palestine are treated by their own state. Israeli members of the Defence Forces who speak out against the atrocities that the Israeli army carries out in the occupation are effectively prevented from ever gaining employment again in the state, as are people who refuse to serve in the Israeli army in the first place. There's a group called Rabbis for Human Rights, who are Israeli rabbis, Jewish rabbis campaigning for human rights in the settlements, and those rabbis are daily under threat for, for the role that they're playing in basically opposing people chopping down olive trees, that's as simple as their actions are. So I think that anybody who believes, if, if there was a flag to show solidarity both with Israelis who oppose the occupation and Palestinians who oppose the occupation, I would be delighted to support it flying over City Hall, but it doesn't exist. We have the flag of a people who are under occupation and the flag of their occupier, that's all, and that's the only choice we have to make. And finally, in terms of Ireland playing the honest broker, I think Ireland has played admirable in relation to Palestine, and it's about the only thing I would ever compliment Anfini fall on, and I would prefer that not to go outside this chamber, but you might want to remember it when you're considering how to vote on this amendment.
Can I ask, we've an awful lot of speakers here, can I, in the, just to move things on a bit, can we, I know we, I can't force this, but can we ask people now to cut it down for a minute for the remainder of the speakers? We'll be here till all hours of the morning. Is that, this is only the amendment we're talking about, we don't have to speak in the motions, or maybe if it's something to say, you can say it once and cover the other them. We're typing the two of them together. Okay, well then, we'll just cut it down for a minute. Councillor Hand.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I just want to oppose this amendment that Fine Gael have proposed, to fly the two flags side by side. The historical equivalent would be to fly the blue, white, and orange flag of South Africa beside the ANC flag side by side. The fact of the matter is that the region between the Mediterranean Sea, the River Jordan, south of the Golan Heights, and north of the Gulf of Akaba is an apartheid state, and I think that has to be said and stated clearly and firmly. Also, the flag of Israel, Israel hasn't signed a nuclear non-proliferation treaty, it's one of only four countries in the world to do that, so I think it's quite dangerous that a demagogue worse than Donald Trump called Benjamin Netanyahu has his finger on a nuclear arms button, I think that is quite dangerous as well. But I'd just like to, I've only a minute, so I'll just finish on this, I'd just like to commend a Dublin activist group called Jewish Voice for a Just Peace, who advocated just flying the Palestinian flag, and I think it shows that, you know, that people support human rights regardless of their ethnicity or religion, and I just want to commend them.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Paddybook.
Lord Mayor, I visited Jerusalem at the invitation of the Mayor of Jerusalem, and it was nothing short of an indoctrination, an attempt at indoctrination. The man was so right-wing, he wouldn't even shake hands with the, with the women mayors of Bombay or Delhi. But they thought that, that I was going to go along with everything they had in mind. I got the, I got the embassy car from Ramallah and went into Bethlehem, and let me tell you the conditions that they live in in Bethlehem. Everything that goes beyond, through that gate, Lord Mayor, is controlled by the Israelis, from concrete to food. They are, they are left, more or less, in a situation where they have to take whatever is given to them, and have no economy of their own, they're reduced to selling Christian items outside the, the...
Councillor...
The Basilica.
We've, we've finished.
And I have to tell you one thing, I will, I couldn't vote for the amendment, and I urge everyone to vote for the motion.
Councillor Freehill.
Thank you very much. I certainly feel very strongly in solidarity with Palestine. The one thing that I think we have to be clear about tonight is that we're in the business of peace, and peace is about compromise and it's about tolerance, and I think that's what we're trying to achieve. And what is very interesting, in fact, when I was Lord Mayor, and when I did the very best that I could at that time to try to put the hands across the border, it was Sinn Féin who were the most opposed, and this is a matter of record in the courts in terms of what Sinn Féin did to me as Lord Mayor, because they couldn't tolerate the fact that I recognised the Protestant community in Northern Ireland. So, you know, I'm not surprised, things haven't changed, and as far as I'm concerned, we have to, this is about peace, and it's about showing tolerance, and it's for that reason that I support it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McDonagh.
Good morning, our fair, well, I won't have time to answer councillor Freehill, I think I know what she's referring to, but that'll have to leave for another place. This is about the Palestinians, the unique position, we have to recognise the unique position of Palestine, it's unique in the world, and people may ask, well, why fly the flag? And they've talked about a two-state solution, which is widely supported, and including the majority of representatives of the Palestinian people, a huge compromise in their history. The reality is, the State of Israel is attempting to obliterate the people of Palestine, so there cannot be a two-state solution, because there will be no Palestine, there will be no Palestinian people to have a state. That's why they have tried to obliterate Gaza, that's why we have the settlements, that's why we have repression and thousands of people in prison. That is the reality, and that's what we recognise in solidarity by flying the flag.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Heaney.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. As a member of a party of peace, I have to say that I'd prefer if there was no flag flown over City Hall, neither flag. I was, I was at the Protocol Committee meeting, and it certainly was not a unanimous decision. I did not vote in favour of the motion, just, I want to put that on record. And I, I think that the motion that has been put forward, amending the, the substantive motion, is a compromise. I believe we should leave the issue to our government and to our excellent diplomats. We're a nation of peace-making. This day, 10 years ago, Lord Mayor, the people in Northern Ireland reached an agreement, we reached an agreement in this nation, and I think everybody, or nearly everybody, is very, very happy with it. I think we should support no one side over another in this, Lord Mayor, but I'm happy to support the amendment as a compromise.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Flynn.
Thank you very much. And just to say that there was, the motion in question was on the agenda of the Protocol Committee for a month, and there was ample opportunity at that particular stage to make the necessary amendments. This is a symbol, a flag is a symbol, it's a symbol, it's not a victorious symbol, in this instance, it's a symbol of solidarity, flying on the roof of Dublin City Council, City Hall. The other issue is in relation to councillor McGinnity, perhaps it is time to take a look at the Flags and Emblems Act of Northern Ireland, which is a very, very good act indeed, you know what I mean, and maybe begin to look at it in terms of our issues here, because I'm so glad that this is happening here tonight, it's really, really important, and I'm absolutely honoured that at this particular instance, and I hope that we can actually vote in support of flying the Palestinian flag, because it's going to send out a very clear message to those people over there who've been left with salt and ashes, and their lives are basically being undermined. We had the similar situation in Northern Ireland, and through a whole lot of efforts and a whole lot of common sense, we managed to get to the place where we are, we had lots of issues in relation to that.
Okay, councillor. Thank you.
So I would say...
Councillor Christie-Buck.
Reject the motion, reject the amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I too would offer my support to Palestinian solidarity groups, and I ask that the amendment be rejected. I can remember in 2015, Lord Mayor, when I was Lord Mayor, during the conflict of Palestine and Israel, when the Israelis were bombing schools and killing men, women, and children, and when I had to call in the Israeli ambassador to the mansion house, his arrogance, his denial, and his sort of, how dare you say that to me, when I asked him to call off his bombers to stop killing children, he put it down to information and intelligence that the Israelis had in relation to weapons being held in dumps, no such weapons were ever found, so, you know, when that's the arrogance that you were up against meeting, I certainly support fully, and I commend councillor Lyons, and indeed the Protocol Committee, and the Palestinian Brothers, who may be in the audience or thereabouts.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kennedy.
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. First of all, I'll briefly accept councillor Ryan's comments, very wonderful. I'm opposed to the motion, and opposed to the vote. I think councillor McGinnity's been very wrong. I think our flag of the Union, having your opinion, is not a compromise. I want to be very clear that opposing the motion is not a lack of solidarity with the Palestinian people, and if you're in doubt about that, just ask councillor Ryan to give a clarification of his position. But I do want to say one thing, that if I have to decide between the amendment or the motion, there's no question that I would side with the amendment, for two reasons. First of all, the framing of a motion is so undiplomatic that no chemical will not result in a Palestinian situation. And the second reason is that, yes, the Israeli government has done some terrible things in the name of this yellow, under that flag, but I'm sure councillor Andrews has said for that reason, he would fly the Union flag, to agree with the United States, and the British government also, in Northern Ireland, did some terrible things under the Union flag, but with no difficulty in flying that flag on designated days for a birthday.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you councillor. councillor Niddalick.
The flying of the flag is, it's a solidarity gesture. It's not going to bring about a two-state solution. It's a solidarity gesture with the people of Palestine and their right to self-determination. Palestinians have suffered decades of human rights violations. And in the absence of any concrete and meaningful actions from the international community to hold the Israeli state to account for its ongoing human rights and international law violations, this gesture of solidarity is the least we in Ireland can offer the Palestinian people. Just as the Scottish councils of Glasgow, Fife and West Brombacher did in 2014 and Dundee did in 2010. This great historic city of Ballyoaklea, which was so often the center of Ireland's own struggle for freedom, justice and equality, will take pride in flying the flag. And as the old Irish proper refers, "Er skua heile a warren na dina."
Thank you councillor. councillor McHugh.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I could not support this amendment, but I'd support the motion. Israel, I think, is the aggressor. Their daily incursion by Israeli troops into refugee camps and the flying of the Palestinian flag is just a symbolic gesture of solidarity and a beacon of light to the people of Israel. And I will support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. councillor Perry.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I totally oppose the amendment. We can't equate the oppressors and the oppressed. Bully states such as Israel depend on the acquiescence of others to continue their oppression. And this oppression by the Israeli state continues today with illegal land occupations, the building of an apartheid wall, demolishing more Palestinian homes and the terrorization of the native Palestinian population. I think one statistic confirms the rogue nation status of Israel. Israel is in violation of more UN resolutions than any other UN member. Israel has violated over 30 binding resolutions of the United Nations Security Council and almost 100 non-binding resolutions of the General Assembly. How the progressive Jews of history, who worked in the labor movements, the social justice movements and the peace movements, must be [BLEEP] in their graves to see the oppressed torn to oppression? Margaret Thatcher.
Thank you councillor. councillor Lacey.
Lord Mayor, there's no doubt that the people of Palestine have been treated businessly and, you know, the Israeli government deserve a huge amount of condemnation. But, I mean, not for the first time, I really despair of the sole politics of flags and emblems and symbols and nationalism and all of that, which I believe is one of the great curses of the modern world. I share councillor McGinley's view about the politicization of City Hall, and I think it's a really dangerous road we're heading down. It's what led partially to the abolition of the Greater London Council in London when the council under Ken Livingstone adopted every extreme position, every odd position imaginable that led to, that allowed Margaret Thatcher the authority and the power to abolish it. In terms of achieving anything and trying to promote peace in the region, which is something that I'd like to see, apart from having any flags, I would support the amendment that has been put forward by councillor Feeney. Though personally, I'd prefer if we flew no flags over City Hall.
Thank you councillor.
Other than the three that we do at the moment.
councillor Dunn.
Lord Mayor, when you're a victim of oppression, held down in an iron grip, a victim of blockades, a victim of air raids, imprisonment, an act of solidarity from a distance can lift the spirits of a people and a nation. And a great example of that was when Mary Manning refused to handle South African fruit and we had the Dunsthorpe strike in the Henry Street store. A lot of people thought, what good is that doing? It was a big thing for those people in South Africa who are victims of apartheid. It was so big that when Nelson Mandela was buried, they invited those strikers over as VIPs to his funeral. By us flying the Palestinian flag over the EU capital of Dublin, it sends a message to those oppressed people that there are people out there who care. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor. councillor Jackson.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, judging by the amount of emails I've got in relation to particularly one aspect in relation to this, we've touched an extremely raw nerve, I have to say. Some of the content has been absolutely appalling, that the world was almost come to an end. I have absolutely no difficulty in supporting what councillor Lyons tonight has put forward to the council here. I know we're voting on the amendment here. Anybody, the disproportionate reaction of Israel to the people of Palestine is of a scale never known before in humanity. In 1996, Dublin City Council supported a motion that I put forward to have a park in Ballyfermit named after East Timor Park. And I have to say, Dr Jose Ramos-Horteg, the first president of an independent Timor, came to Ballyfermit. He said that that small gesture we done had a huge profound impact in East Timor. Can I just say, I totally agree with the right of Israel to exist. I absolutely unequivocally. But I can tell you one thing, the way they behave is not the way that democratic states behave.
councillor Kelly Gillan.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's a rarity when I'm inspired by a motion to quote a clergyman, but if I can just quote the great Desmond Tutu, when he said that if you're neutral in times of injustice, then you've chosen the side of the oppressor. When I read this amended motion here, that's all I can think of. The idea of those two flags outside flying as if they're equals is abhorrent to me. The people of this great city of ours have a great tradition of demonstrating solidarity with people who are in times of oppression. I think this would be a very small act. A very small act, but with big tangible ramifications. There are many of us who believe in a two-state solution, accept the right of Israel to exist. But even with that, the blockades continued, the land grabs continued. So now as a city, what we're doing is we're standing up and we're saying, no more. If this is their small act of defiance, well then so be it.
Thank you councillor. councillor Montagio.
Yeah, I think it's important to support and give solidarity to the Palestinian people. And I acknowledge a lot of the points that have been made here this evening, such as the Israeli state is by far the more powerful state in this conflict. And in particular, we have a particularly hardline government in Israel at the moment. But also in Israel, there's a substantial minority of people who don't support that government. And I think it's important that we talk to those people too and support those people. I remember in our peace process, the importance of third countries. Bill Clinton was able to get the trust of both communities. And that's what I think the role of Ireland should be, is to support the minority in Israel who are looking for peace and the people in Palestine who are looking for peace as well. So for that reason, I think we can fly the Palestinian flag and show our support for a two-state solution, but at the same time fly the Israeli flag to support the moderates in Israel and to give them encouragement to keep going.
councillor Farrow.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't want to go over some of the points some of the other councillors have made, but I want to support councillor Lyons's motion. I'd be against the amendment. We're not quite up to speed yet as far as recognizing the state of Palestine in this country. My own colleague, Finian McGrath, he ensured that a section was incorporated into our program government that was decided last year, that was agreed, to honor our commitment to recognize the state of Palestine as part of a lasting settlement of the conflict. So we're not actually doing that yet. That had to be incorporated into the program from government last year. And not all elements of this government agree with that. Some of them are a bit slow in getting agreement. But this is a written, signed agreement for the government, and I expect it to be implemented in the next few months or so, a year or so. But, and just one thing I'd like to say to some of the, a lot of people that emailed us, who I recognize their rights to emails and I thank them and all that, but there's not one word of anti-Semitic. There's none of that, antisemitism.
Thank you councillor.
There's nothing here about it.
councillor Till.
There's not one councillor here that would, and we wouldn't tolerate it either. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to ask the people in this chamber, does anyone here believe in their own heart that Israel in any time soon are going to give back the land they stole? They stole from the Palestinian people. Is there anyone here that believes, that believes they're going to cease moving in and taking further land? Do you know? They do that until the Palestinian people are wiped out. I am proud to support the motion. I'd be proud to see that flag over our capital city, City Hall. I would be proud, because we are the people who has stood up for marginalized people. We were marginalized ourselves, and there are people in this city who are marginalized at this moment. Now, just one more thing, Lord Mayor. councillor Freehill, you wouldn't stop from engaging with the unionist community. You were stopped from engaging with the Orange Order, who at that time were parading through Catholic areas and also stopping people from going to their church, from going to their mass. And one very good, one very good Fine Gael...
councillor McCullough. councillor McCullough.
Councillors. councillor O'Toole. councillor McCullough.
Lord Mayor, I'm going to take my lead from councillor Ryan's contribution. And I do acknowledge that in two elements of peace process, both our Fine Gael's record on Palestine and our involvement in the Northern Ireland peace process, the issue of parity of esteem was a principal issue. We were one of the first countries in the world, and certainly the first in the EU, to recognize that there should be an independent Palestine. We had the first foreign minister to visit the Palestinian Authority. I believe that the end of violence in Northern Ireland and parity of esteem were two of the principal bedrocks in which the Northern Ireland peace process was built. We have two motions here that send a signal that there should be parity of esteem. One is a weak message, and the other is a stronger one. I believe that it is not inconsistent that we should fly the Palestinian flag in an effort of solidarity, say that there should be two states. There is one, and there should be two.
Thank you councillor. councillor Roche.
Margaret Thatcher, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, there is a part of me that does believe in what councillor McGinley said, that we should only fly the national flag and the Dublin flag and possibly the EU flag on buildings. I worry about a precedence that we're setting for City Hall in terms of international visits or what we might have to do, et cetera, et cetera. But at the same time, symbols matter. Symbols matter to whether it's young kids, whether it's people involved in struggle or oppression. And for that reason, I'll be voting to fly the Palestinian flag over City Hall.
Thank you. and councillor McCarty.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Reference was made to a two-state solution. That has been policy for many countries for the last 20 years, but recent polls have shown that almost 45% of Palestinians are not in favor of a two-state solution. I am certainly not in favor of symbolic gestures. I will not support the amendment. I will not, I will vote against the motion on the basis that I'd, no side in this conflict has a monopoly on rectitude. And I would put the blame on both sides. But absolutely, there should be no flying of any flag on this building.
Okay councillor, we can hang on, we're not having a cross debate. Can I just, for what it's worth, want to put my own view on this. I'm a group, when I explain this to the group leaders today, I'm a group of kids from both Israel and Palestine called Kids for Peace. And they came in with one very clear message to me, that they wanted Dublin and they wanted Ireland to assist in assisting to a peaceful resolution to what's going on. And they made it very clear to me that they didn't want me or anyone in Ireland taking sides in doing that. These were kids between the age of 13 and 17, standing beside each other, playing with each other, supporting each other for that very clear message. It's for reasons as that, that I'm going to take a decision to abstain on both the amendment and to abstain on both the vote. Where I fully support the cause of the Palestinian people, I fully sympathize with what's going on there. And I've been known in the past to speak in favor of a comfortable resolution here, which would bring, to me, bring a two-state solution. But I do not want to be seen making a commitment to kids that I would be impartial and trying to do everything to have a peaceful, where both sides can come to a compromise, and then at the same time, supporting one side over the other. And where I mightn't be supporting one side over the other, it may be portrayed as I'm supporting one side over the other. So I want everyone to understand my position on that. I now ask that we would take a vote on the amendment.
So proceeding votes on the... councillor Feeney's amendment seconded by councillor Murray.
We're having the gremlins in here.
Sorry. You can vote now. Please proceed to vote.
Yes and no.
Abstain as well. Abstain as well. Okay, we have 11 votes for the amendment, 43 against, and seven abstentions. So now we would proceed to take the...
The substantive motion. Can I ask at this stage, that, I know the chairperson technically takes the report, or the motion on the report, but to move things, that we don't all speak the whole same thing again. There's not much point in this. But in fairness, Jesus, will you, fairness, in fairness, the councillor Lyons, he hasn't spoken, and he's running forward the motion. And I think you should be given the two minutes to speak, it's the same as every proposer. Is that agreed?
Agreed. Then we go. It's not a normal motion.
Okay, I would like to thank my fellow councillors here this evening who've spoken so passionately. To thank also the hundreds of people who've emailed over the last number of weeks. It's been amazing to read some of the testimonies of people, their strong beliefs in the justice and the cause of Palestinian self-determination. I would also like to welcome Ken Kelly, Martin Quigley and Fatan Al Tamimi from the Ireland-Palestine Solidarity Campaign, of which I am a huge supporter. Desmond Tutu was mentioned earlier, and I think it's nearly obligatory to mention not only Desmond Tutu, but Nelson Mandela when it comes to the issue of self-determination, freedom and justice for Palestine, when he said, "We know too well that our freedom is incomplete without the freedom of the Palestinians." But I would like to mention a comrade of Nelson Mandela's who spent over 26 years in prison with him, who died recently, a couple of months ago actually, Ahmed Cathrada, who visited Palestine. And I will quote, "In our short stay here, we have seen and heard enough to conclude that apartheid has been reborn here. It is reborn, in its reborn form, it is however worse than its predecessor. Even during the worst days of apartheid, we did not have walls to divide or control people. We also did not have separate roads for separate races. We did not have the system of checkpoints that exists here." So I would like to thank my fellow councillors for taking a stand for justice for Palestine, similar to what many people in Dublin and across the country did in the 1980s against South African apartheid. It is, as many people have said, it's a small gesture, it's a symbolic gesture of support and solidarity for those Palestinians living under a brutal, and I mean, I've been over there and only got a taste of the brutal occupation in the West Bank, and horrific and vicious siege and blockade of Gaza, where those near 7 million Palestinian refugees who are denied the right of return, and those Palestinian citizens of Israel who are denied equality of treatment before the law and full democratic rights. This is a small gesture for solidarity from a history with a deep and proud history of anti-colonialism, and I think it means a lot, so I look for your support here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Can we put that to a vote?
Lord Mayor, just on a point of clarification. If the Palestinian flag is flown, if the vote is successful, which flag is going to come down instead?
I haven't a clue. Will we take the vote? And I'm, I... Okay, we're ready to vote.
You can vote, the vote is ready.
Can I remind the councillors, we still have another item after this. We just have to adopt the JPC reviate.
Okay, so that motion is carried 42 for 11 against, 7 abstentions. Can I take it that the post pod reviate then is agreed as well?
Item 26. Item 26, can we take that joint pleasing committee's reviate as agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay.